Good evening. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission's September 19, 2022 meeting. It's 6:30 PM. May we have the roll call?
Greg Strike.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Polis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Jared Gardner and Brad D. Eber are excused. Do you have a quorum? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are Special Order of Business. Are there any disclosures? Commissioner Polis?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Strike?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah. In the matter of case 2022-0090, I'll disclose that I participated in some of the meetings with the ADU Working Group, and I'm also a residential home builder. I've built ADUs in the past and probably will again in the future.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion directing Commissioner Spinelli to participate?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Polis. Does anyone have any comments? Hearing none?
I'll go ahead and go on the record that the disclosures that Commissioner Spinelli has identified are routine and come about during the normal course of business for this commission, and that I don't feel that the, you know, we'll take a vote, but I don't see any issues with him continuing on with this project.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'd just add that I think his experiences will be valuable for this type of hearing.
Thank you. Hearing nothing further, we'll call a vote. That vote passes with five in favor and one abstention. Commissioner Spinelli, you may participate in the rest of this agenda. Commissioner Ron?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On the case, case number 2022-0090, as I've previously disclosed to the commission, I am a resident of the Rogers Park Community Council area. My spouse, Cassandra Ron, is the secretary of that community council. We have before us supplementary packet number one, which is a resolution from the Rogers Park Community Council. I was not engaged in the meeting and/or involved with the development of that resolution. This is the first time that I'm seeing it. I don't believe that disclosure rises to the level of a conflict of interest, but there it is. Thanks.
Thank you. And I do believe that we, yes. Would anyone like to make a motion directing Commissioner Ron to participate? Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'll go with the same comments I had for Commissioner Spinelli, that as being part of this community, we have broad context and family that's spread out across, and the, it would be noted that the Rogers Park Community Council is made up of a large body represented by another large body of four or five so commissioners on its body, and that his wife, as noted, is just the secretary and is not, all they do is provide comments.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call a vote. That vote passes with five in favor. Commissioner Ron, you're directed to participate. And I also have no disclosures. We're now on to public hearings. I will read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Case 2022-0090 is before us this evening. May we have the staff's presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here tonight to talk about accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs. We've been working on this proposal, this amendment to code for about a year, and I'll just kind of quickly go over what we've done, why we're doing it, and some of the primary changes. So, in the 240 land use plan directs us to look at compact housing types, accessory dwelling units are one of those types, and the 2040 land use plan also calls out ADUs specifically, trying to encourage 1,000 accessory dwellings in the bowl by 2040. We've been working on this project for about a year. We've started out creating a work group, which had a number of kind of different parties from the community, developers, private parties, local interest groups, and just regular kind of large, small, trying to get a broad base of input. We've met five times since November. We started with a survey we sent out in November 2021, and we got back 330 responses, so we sent it to the Federation of Community Councils and heard back. We also used data from a research project completed by Lindsay Heiduk of Neighbor Works America in Anchorage, which was really helpful to kind of augment our survey results. We talked to the Community Economic Development Committee meeting on March 10, 2022. We've been kind of talking with people as they call our office, people who are interested in building or have concerns or questions. South Edition invited us on a lovely walking tour of compact housing in South Edition neighborhood in May of this year. Some of those were ADUs, some of them were just secondary units, but nonetheless, it was a really useful and kind of informative experience for us. And then we've been talking to community councils via presentation since about April of this year. So, we talked to downtown community council, Rogers Park, Birchwood, Rabbit Creek, Fairview, Hillside, Chugiak, Spinnard, and South Edition. One thing that, when we started this project, we were not intending to do anything with Eagle River, Chugiak, but they requested that we come and make a presentation to them, and then they requested some changes, and you will see those reflected in the proposal. And we did not touch the Girdwood ordinance, so that is a separate section of code, and this does not speak to that. So, I'll just quickly go over some of the primary changes to the proposal. One, we removed the owner occupancy requirement. Two, we allowed an ADU to be accessory to a single-family or a duplex. We changed the ADU size so that an ADU always has to be subordinate to the primary dwelling, but it can be either up to 900 square feet or 40% of the primary structure, but it always has to be subordinate. We changed a distinction between Class A and Class B districts, which is really more of a road service distinction. We removed the vehicle storage or the parking requirement. Setbacks, we basically said that an ADU is subject to all the setbacks of the existing zone, so we didn't really change those. We removed any sort of special limitations and special areas, really just to kind of get to that flexibility. So, when people want to build an ADU, they know, okay, this is what it is, and I don't have to learn any extra special rules or anything like that. We removed the requirement about bedrooms. That's one of those things that it's really hard to enforce, and it's kind of prescriptive, and it's hard to say, how do you know how many people are in a bedroom anyway? Height, that's another thing we looked at. We removed this special limit on height for an ADU, so now it's just subject to the exact same requirement as in that zone. And for a lot of these changes, I just want to emphasize that the intent was really just to kind of simplify, make this understandable to just a regular person interested in adding an ADU, and also not really change the total allowable building volume that's currently allowed. So, in earlier versions of the proposal, we said you could have a 5% increase in lot size, maximum lot coverage. We took that out because that doesn't really make that much sense, right? If we're saying it's not going to change what's already allowed, that would be a slight change. So, basically, if you can build a house that's 2,000 square feet, and it's within all the setbacks, and it goes up to 30 feet, this proposal just says you can build a house that's 1,000 square feet and an ADU that's 1,000 square feet, or an ADU that would have to be subordinate, an ADU that's 999 square feet. So, you don't exceed the lot coverage minimum, or maximum, excuse me, you don't exceed any of the setbacks, and you don't exceed the height. So, the intent is that the volume, the kind of built bulk remains the same. I'd be glad to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Are there any questions for staff by the commission? Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. Thank you for the, no problem. Thank you for that. This is changes to the current regulations as are currently written, and you've identified a number of points of changes. Kind of a blunt question, what wasn't working before, and why will these changes help make it work better? And by that, on some of the points, removing the owner occupied aspect, obviously, that became a concern, and that's being removed. Was that not working before? People weren't going to add an ADU before because it had to be, one of the units had to be owner occupied, or the main unit had to still remain owner occupied?
Thank you, Commissioner. If I may, to the chair. Yes, that is correct. So, we've had, Anchorage has had an ADU ordinance on the books since at least 2018, and this is sort of changing those existing, as you pointed out. What wasn't working is a great question. In terms of planning and housing, it's very difficult to know what isn't working necessarily because there are so many people who want to try something, who want to do something, who never get the chance to try and do it. And there's no way to kind of track that, right? Like, we don't know all the people who said, hey, I'd like to add a different unit, but I'm not able to. Every once in a while, we get somebody who comes and says, I really wish I could have done this, but I wasn't able to. But unfortunately, there's no really good way to track that. So, the way we tried to get at that is we did that survey, and in the survey, which is in the packet, and it's available on the project webpage, we tried to ask, have people been interested in this? And if they have, what are the things that have been kind of obstacles or stymied them in getting there? And you'll see in the responses, one of the main things is building materials, right? And so, some of those things, the Muni can't fix. We can't fix financing rules, we can't fix building materials, we can't change the cost of labor. So, we then really just focus on what are the things we can fix that are in the existing code: setbacks, height, owner occupancy. And owner occupancy in particular, it's one of those things which, which we don't apply that rule to any other type, housing type in the municipality. And so, it is kind of unclear what problem it was solving, or whether it was the most effective way to solve some of the identified problems. And just kind of, it really is in sake of fairness, if we don't require a single-family home to be owner occupied, then it's hard to make the same case for the ADU. Although, one thing I should mention is, short-term rentals have been a big, a serious concern of a lot of people, and I think a lot of people see that as the best solution to resolving that issue. And we want to emphasize, we recognize that is a big issue, and we're ready to work on it, but we just don't think that owner occupancy necessarily addresses that problem.
But that clause before wasn't an inhibitor necessarily. What I'm concerned about is that some of the fixes that you may be proposing, and while I can get behind some on its face, I'm concerned with unintended consequences. And I'm also concerned a little bit with what some of the impetuses are for some of these changes themselves. Are we really fixing a problem, or are we addressing a minority parties out there who have a concern? I'm trying to look at the broad brush, because this impacts the totality of the municipality, yet we see different segments where we see higher concentrations of ADUs in certain areas than others. Yes, we may see a high concentration in South Anchorage, but South Anchorage encompasses a wide, larger track anyway, as composed to Midtown, or Turnigan, or Rogers Park, for example. And so, with the impact of some of these changes to these smaller, tighter communities, they may not, their impact may be felt greater than you would in all of South Anchorage, for example. So, I just want to take, I'm looking at it from that perspective as well, and making sure that we're not creating unintended consequences. And, you know, in some cases, maybe some of these work in certain areas of town, but not others. Yet, we're trying to broad brush this as a total fix. So, that's part of my concern as I review this here tonight. Thank you.
May I respond? What's the procedure, Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for that. And so, just in terms of unintended consequences, I think a lot of it comes from bringing in a lot of people together and hearing about what they've seen, and also what they've seen in other places, right? Because ADU reform has been kind of going on in different places, and at this point, there's a lot of evidence that says, well, these are the things that tend to create a problem, right? Or these are the things that tend to provide an impediment or an obstacle. And in terms of unintended consequences, I think any change is going to have unintended consequences. And I understand that that, it's not what people want to see necessarily, but we're charged by the plan to kind of fulfill this need to meet that housing, right? And so, ultimately, it comes a question of, there might be some unintended consequences, right? There might be somebody builds something at a height that's allowed by the zoning code that wasn't there before. But at the end of the day, is it more important that the municipality got an extra unit in the housing stock, or that we're trying to avoid this kind of unintended consequence, or write a code that tries to capture and prevent every possible unintended consequence? And there's no easy answer, right? I can't predict what will happen or not, and I should have said this before, but ADUs aren't going to be a silver bullet, because they're not, they're not that cheap to build, they're not that simple to build, but they are a tool in the toolbox. So, I think we're kind of thinking that every, every sort of policy change, every proposal has attendant risks, but at this point, because there's so much pressure to address housing, and this is one of the tools that has been demonstrated to kind of let people build housing in the more local scale, and we've looked at all these other places and heard from people here and said, these are the things that they've identified. So, we said, if we can't find a hard reason to maintain this regulation, maybe we consider try removing it in the hopes of getting more housing.
And I appreciate that. And as we take a look at some of the changes that are being proposed today, what I'm cutting right to the chase, I'm just seeing that the, this proposal intent is to put more rental units on the market, create more rental units. And it's kind of taken away from the backseat of what the original accessory dwelling units were originally intended. But almost predominantly, the changes that we're looking at here today seem to be geared to creating rental units. And I just want to, let's call it what it is then. Let's not hide behind an ADU. Let's create another regulation, and let's throw in more, let's allow this across the city, and put more rental units in tied to it. But let's not sneak up on it in certain areas in the neighborhood. And that's my concern with the unintended consequences, and that this is a way of sneaking in a number of, in the single-family arenas and established neighborhoods, to create rental units. That's my concern. Thank you.
Would you like, through the chair, the proposal just focuses on units. I think the intent is not to control how people use them one way or another, or if it's used for a family member, or this or that. We're really looking at overall housing stock. A lot of the housing stock in Anchorage is, you know, 40 years old or older, and that's kind of the replacement point. So, again, this is just one tool, and if people are willing to spend their own money to build a unit on their property, that, I think, our division looks at that, that's a positive, right? How they're used, the type of people who will live there, we can't really speak to that, and I'm not disputing anything that you're saying, that maybe if people build them, and the way the financial kind of incentives work out, they would rent them. But our proposal is to implement the plan, which says we want more compact housing types, and we want specifically ADUs. So, there's no language in here that says these are intended for rentals. There's nothing says, you know, that says this type of person can or can't live in them. But, so the larger question of what's the intent is, I would just say, the intent is to get units and to implement the plan. How that plays out, that's probably a bigger question. Thank you.
Seeing no further, oh, excuse me. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, through the chair. I appreciate your response to the prior commissioner's questions, and I want to follow up on your last statement around intent to get more units available. Has the department done an analysis of what these changes might enable in terms of achieving that intent?
If I may, through the chair, do you mean what, what kind of production we might expect to see?
Quantified analysis, yes.
That's a great question, and I think we just, we don't know because we don't know what we don't know, right? One of the numbers we've kind of batted around is that, what would it be like to get 20% of all building permits to be an accessory dwelling unit? So, I think this year, last I looked, we had maybe 300 or 400, right? So, what if we got 60 ADUs? That would be significantly more than we've gotten so far this year. So far, we've gotten about 21 or so. I think last year, and the year before, we had 25, 26. So, we have a goal. I don't think we have enough data or enough kind of capacity to gather that and figure out, what do people want to build, what don't they want to build? I mean, I've, I've probably gotten maybe five calls from people in the past year, which isn't too much, of people who say, I'd like to do this, I'd like to build my house, but I want to build a smaller house first. But then, when they get through the process, it's really not clear. So, unfortunately, I don't have any good data. I think the last housing study was done in 2012, which, you know, 10 years ago is a whole different world. So, we kind of have our goal, and I think our main thing next would be, if this goes through, is to track it, right? And then also track complaints and see where the issue is. But just right now, we just don't really know what, what the interest is, right? Because, again, what was it last year when the refinancing was great, and all these people had all this extra cash? That would have been a really interesting time to see how many people build ADUs. But the rates are different now, right? So, kind of a sneaky answer to say, I don't know, but we would, one thing we've done with this is try to collect a lot of data and keep tracking that data. So, that's, maybe in a year, I could let you know.
Seeing no other questions, we will now open the hearing to public testimony. Is there anyone here wishing to testify? Welcome. Could you state and spell your last name for the record, and could you let us know if you're speaking as an individual or as a representative of a group? Oh, excuse me, there's a green button on, there we go. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Bob Butera. Last name is spelled D-A-Z-N-B-O-Y-U-T-E-R-A. I'm a 35-year resident of Rogers Park Community Council and Community, and I'm speaking on my own. Our council also submitted a resolution, and I don't know if anybody's going to speak to that, but I'm speaking on my own. I live on a typical 50-foot wide by 150-foot long R1 lot, and I really value having sunshine in my house and in my yard, and I really value my neighborhood. And I am supportive of ADUs, or at least I was in the past, but I'm very concerned about the existing, about the existing regulations, and I'm especially concerned about these changes being proposed by the planning department. When the original ADU ordinance was passed in 2018, words like "compact," "cottage," "garden," "mother-in-law" were the words that were tossed out. These words have lost their meaning in the excessive height and size that both the current regulations, and especially these newer regulations, allow. And the proposed revisions take this even further by allowing ADUs to be even bigger and taller, and allowing them not to be owner occupied. In 2017, Senior MOA Planner Tom Davis issued a memo, and I'm sure, I'm hoping you've all read that, but in it, he analyzed the proposed current ADU regulations, and he recommended reasonable size and heights limitations, and those were ignored back then. And these were regulations that respected neighbors, especially on R1 lots. So, and coming back to the restriction on owner occupancy, this is a path from a stable single-family neighborhood to a neighborhood of short-term vacation rentals. And this is exactly the opposite of the goals of the original ADU ordinances, which was to bring mother-in-law apartments, families, together, not to bring in short-term rental units, not to have a duplex that's rented out in a single-family zone. So, the current and proposed regulations, to me, they amount to a taking. They amount to a taking of solar rights, privacy, and especially the stability of neighborhoods, which are so important. And I'm going to state that my comments apply specifically to R1 zoning. I'm not as familiar with the other ones. I read in the packet just now where the goal was to have one set of regs for the entire bowl. And there's a vast difference between 40% of a 50-by-150-foot lot and 40% of a half-acre lot. So, why you would do this blanket statement like that is beyond me. So, I urge you-
Excuse me, your three minutes is up. Thank you for your testimony.
I'm sorry. Thank you. But I do urge you to reject these proposed amendments.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Oh, no, I'm asked if there was anyone else wishing to testify.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear-
Thank you.
The mysterious green button?
Oh, I think it was on before. Thank you.
Peter Taylor, I'm Executive Director at Habitat for Humanity Anchorage. Just very briefly speak in support of any measures which bring more dwelling availability into Anchorage, and we would support this measure going through.
Excuse me, before you continue, could you tell us if you're speaking as a representative of a group?
Habitat for Humanity Anchorage.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Clay Porter. I'm an architect and a contractor and developer. I've been building in this city since 1972, and I'm testifying or talking, both myself and for the body of us who are home builders who build in this community, but for myself as much as anything. ADUs are an interesting market. I've built probably 30 to 35 of them in this city, and they've had many differing names over the past years. But ADUs fill, help to fill the market, mitigate a problem we have with affordable housing. They're not cheap to build, excuse me, my hearing aids are, they're not cheap to build, but they do provide alternative housing or an additional source of housing that is very, very important. And we do regularly probably one to three a year, and have for a long time. But part of the other problem that's occurred with ADUs is that now available leisure-cost housing doesn't exist as much because of Airbnbs, BnBs. We don't have anymore, we have very few SROs in this community or single-room occupancies. We don't have rental hotels or boarding houses anymore. So, those things have taken up a different share of the market. ADUs have existed for a long time, as I said. We just called them a different name. In the first ones I built in this city, we just had the rules, and the city told us, we couldn't put a full kitchen in, and so we put a microwave and a dishwasher and maybe a sink. And, you know, and that was, you know, and attached, and most of them were attached at that point. First, what I did was in College Village in 1978. So, they work, they work within there. We need to have increased density. We're not running out of land, but we're not using the land we have very well. They've also changed in a lot of other areas around the country. Oregon has enacted a right or rules or statutes that by statute or by right, any residential land in the state of Oregon can have an ADU in the residential. Seattle's done it for the city itself, and City of Vancouver, BC has done the same kind of thing. So, they're really important for that. They may be used for, as far as the ownership is concerned- They may be used for, as far as the ownership is concerned, to your point, sir. And the ones that I found, what happens if a person builds one, an ADU, they stay in the main unit, or they live in the ADU, but then they choose to sell the property again? If you transfer the title, then you have to go through the affidavit process again, and the new owner may or may not wish to do that, but it takes away his ability to do that. It’s really no different than a rental house that, and many neighborhoods have rental single-family houses, even in, you know, in almost every neighborhood that I know of in the city. I’m not going to try and read all these notes because I’m going to run out of time, but I think the changes have been thought out. I must also say, I was on the ADU working group, have been for a long period of time. I think it makes a great deal of sense, and I think we need to, you know, provide some other sources of housing. 900 square feet rents for a lot less than 3,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet. Thank you.
Excuse me, there are questions for you. Commissioner Pulis?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. I wonder, what’s your opinion on getting rid of the parking stall required for an ADU currently? That’s in the packet to get rid of that requirement.
I think it should work out without any problem. We tend to overvalue, we tend to over-require our parking, which goes right along with the land use issues. I think the land use issues of lot coverage and the 25-foot height and these kind of regulations actually, those work quite well. The additional parking, I know that in two that we did in two years ago, it added an extra $50,000 to the project. They did it because the rules said they had to do it, and they had the ability to do it financially. So it does create a burden, and the larger, the further out you are from the center of town, the easier that seems to be. I mean, as many ADUs are being built in larger lots as smaller lots, from what I’ve seen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Strick?
Thank you. You’ve answered the parking question that I had, but of the current regulations that are currently in place, that you’ve been building under, will the new changes that are being promoted here this evening have any positive impact to build more ADUs?
I’m sorry, I didn’t quite understand.
Do you see the new changes that are being promoted now? Right now, we can build ADUs. It’s on the books. You’ve been building them, as you said, since 1978. But in the context of the current regulations put in place in 2018, the changes that are being promoted here this evening, will they increase or not have any, other than parking? What other impact do you think they’ll have on the ability to promote and increase more ADUs?
I think the new policies will increase more ADUs. To see a run of 200 done next year, no. This is the kind of project that happens over a long period of time. People talk about them in their families or the property owners. I know of at least four right now, the people with this change of regulations have an illegal ADU. They will then go convert it to a legal ADU. And you have an incredible number of ill, not, I don’t know if incredible is the right word, but there are a lot of illegal ADUs. I took four months, last year it took me four to five months to take a man, a project that an individual had started 10 years ago and then quit because he got frustrated, and he paid me $7,000 to go through the regulations to get him a legal ADU, which we did because it helped his financing and all these other issues.
And you’re going to the heart of some of the problems we’ve seen here in the past, is that certain new regulations, many times we see put in place, aren’t a necessary, they’re intended to promote future growth and future building in the future, but many times they’re to hide past sins in the past because there might be an underlying group that said, “I can’t sell my home as it is. I’ve got to have it brought up to code,” and codes are changing now to reflect, as you pointed out, the illegal or the not-to standards that were built previously.
The two of which I know, they’re not illegal, they just can’t be called an ADU.
Exactly.
They’re called something else. So it’s a semantic game at that point.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
I’m Diane Holmes, speaking for the Rabbit Creek Community Council. Some of our comments may have already been addressed with some changes—
Excuse me, could you give us one minute before you begin your testimony?
Pardon?
I believe that we have a Nancy Peace who’s requested phone testimony on behalf of the Rabbit Creek Community Council.
She wants to take five minutes. They can’t hear you.
Could you turn your mic on, please?
Yeah.
Yes.
If she wants to take five, that’s fine. I think she was only asking for three. It’s up to you.
She had requested five minutes on behalf of the council. Would you still like to testify as an individual?
No, I can make mine in three.
Wonderful. Yes, please go ahead and testify as an individual. You’ll have three minutes to testify.
To take her phone call?
We’ll take phone testimony at the end of in-person testimony.
Okay. The second paragraph of the staff report pretty much sums it up. ADUs are one of many tools adopted for addressing housing supply. Our council and other commenters have stressed the conflict between the need for housing and short-term rentals. Staff stated that, so, I’m not going to skip that. Staff did not acknowledge that short-term rentals are actually part of the hospitality business that fall through the loophole of that regulation. BnBs are regulated and ensure compatibility with the neighborhood. The key component here is owner occupancy. Small-scale home businesses are allowed by code in residential areas, and they are regulated. Thus, staff’s statement that ADUs can’t be regulated is unfounded. If there are not conditions for owner occupancy, then we fail to give, to provide residential housing, and in the end, it only drives up prices for long-term renters as well. Regarding square footing, it isn’t reasonable to allow ADUs up to 40% of the main structure in many instances. There are large homes in town on relatively small lots that are on slopes. For instance, there’s one in prominence, point, probably many, 5,000-square-foot house, 4,000-square-foot lot, and by using that formula, there could be a 2,040%, 2,000-square-foot ADU. Obviously, this would not constitute good land use planning. Revised the condition for Class B districts to be 900 square feet or a certain percentage, whichever is less. A great deal of public input was put into creating the latest Title 21 with the purpose of making Anchorage a livable city. I don’t see a goal there to promote businesses by overriding our codes for landscaping setbacks and parking. ADUs potentially could double the residential density in some of, with more use of our roads, utilities, and schools. Although doubling the density isn’t likely, there is the need to keep track of the population increases by ADUs because these are the figures that some, will go into future rezoning efforts. I was told by one long-range planner that such calculations would be kept, and by another, they would not. But this needs to be done because some neighbors, in some neighborhoods already have a lot of ADUs that are unidentified, either exterior or interior. And some district plans also have reasons for specific densities. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to testify?
I think I’m going to have to rearrange back up to tall. Oops, sorry. Hi, I’m Teresa Holt, H-O-L-T, and I’m representing AARP Alaska. All right.
Thank you. Please proceed.
We’re here to testify in support of these changes. Specifically, we represent seniors in the state. We’re the largest membership organization with 77,000 seniors, and we feel strongly that these are, ADUs with these regulation changes will be good for seniors. It allows them to have options. You know, currently, there’s many, many houses, especially in the Anchorage area, that are split entry. Those don’t work as people age. Their, you know, stairs become more difficult, so this gives you an opportunity to be able to build an accessible, small ADU on your property and still stay on your property if you wanted. It also allows seniors the opportunity to be able to remain in their home because they’ll be able to create income, you know, if they were able to either rent out their house or rent out the ADU. As folks retire, their income decreases, and as costs go up, it allows them an option to remain on their property. And then the third reason is, it also allows for caregivers to come and live, either in the ADU or in the house, you know? So, you know, as you age, if you’re, if you build an accessible ADU, you could move into that, and your family could move into the house with young kids, and they could still help take care of you. So we’re completely in support of that. And we also wanted to say that we feel strongly that the regulations that apply to a senior, a single-family home should also be the same that apply to an ADU. So, you know, if it’s allowed on that property for that amount of space, then it should be, or the height, all that, it just seems to simplify the codes. In fact, one of our staff is building an ADU, and the codes have really been the part that has made it the most difficult. Took him almost a year to be able to start building because he had to go through all the process, and so that, it makes it very difficult. And by the way, he is planning to put parking on it for his ADU. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Sorry, a second. Hi, my name is Jeanette Lee. I have lived in Anchorage for 12 years, and I’m a senior housing researcher at Sightline Institute, where a nonpartisan public policy think tank. I’m also a current resident of Sand Lake and a former resident homeowner of Rogers Park. I guess I’ll be speaking in both capacities, if that’s allowed. Is that allowed? Anyway—
Would you like to speak as a representative of Sightline?
Sure. I’ll do that. So I’d like to say I’m in favor of the proposed ordinance, expanding housing options for Anchorage citizens, can help make desirable neighborhoods more affordable, confer financial benefits on property owners and renters, and help moderate population loss. Overall, ADUs are one way to add sorely needed housing to our available supply, a modest way. In 2018, as you know, the Assembly revised the city’s ADU ordinance. The data that is available from the city, which Sightline has analyzed, indicate there may have been a very modest increase in ADU construction as a result of that ordinance, if any at all. And so we concluded the city could do even more to encourage ADUs by passing the policy proposals contained in the ordinance. For example, the city could get rid of parking minimums and owner occupancy requirements. In my neighborhood, in Sportsman’s Point, there are two single-family homes just across the street that have been rentals for many years. Were the owners to build ADUs, they would then need to move back in. That doesn’t seem to make sense. More ADUs mean more Anchorage seniors will be able to age in place on a fixed income, as Teresa mentioned. The affordability of ADUs can also attract younger Alaskans on starting salaries. Depending on where they are built, ADUs can improve equitable access to trails and stronger-performing schools. They can also help the finances of homeowners and renters. This is all laid out in an article I wrote on ADUs for Sightline in 2021. Finally, I just want to say, we’re not running out of land to build in Anchorage. We’re simply not using our existing land as efficiently as we could be. The price we pay is a lack of housing opportunities across the city, and even more suburban sprawl that eats away at our green spaces and costs government more in services and maintenance. This ordinance is a modest step toward improving land use policy for current and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Heiduk, and I serve as the Director of Community Engagement for NeighborWorks Alaska, but I’ll be testifying as just an individual. I was fortunate to be able to pursue a Master’s in Community Development focused on policy and practice through the University of New Hampshire, and partner with the municipality to review and move through this process to look at the ADU regulations. And so I just wanted to share a few of the highlights. I know it’s a really big and dense packet that was shared, but doing the outreach in this process, the planning department, not only did their community survey, but in coordination, I also hosted a few different surveys. So in total, we got over 880 surveys, lots of public meetings, different focus groups, and we’re able to kind of pull responses based on if the respondent had an ADU or if were interested, and there were some barriers. So we learned a lot of just what we, the questions that we want to answer. We got some insight. We don’t have, everything’s not perfect. But we did learn, like, for example, folks who had ADUs and were responding, most of those ADUs were internal conversions within their homes. And folks who are interested in ADUs always think about detached, new-build construction. So there’s just an interesting kind of shift when we think about this. Adding this type of housing is a big cost to homeowners, so they need to make it work. And so it’s sometimes easier to do that if you have a level or something that you can convert and have that price and cost out. If you want to build a detached ADU, a lot of the barriers that we heard from folks, of course, were the cost of construction, but permitting, zoning, and property review were also high barriers, like 40% of respondents said that. So when we look at these opportunities that the municipality can do to promote infill development, it is looking at some of these best practices from other cities that make building less costly for property owners. Because this is often small scale. This is maybe a neighbor down the block who’s looking to do this. And it adds a really important value-added type of housing to the community, and it needs to work for them. So all of those different components are just something to highlight. There was a lot of feedback, not only from the regular public outreach process you get from going to councils, there was a lot of intentional outreach on some of these regulatory changes. In some of my surveys, I also asked just how satisfied people were with the types of housing that’s available, if it was affordable to them. And of course, the younger you are, the more new to the neighborhood, or if you’re renting, you find a lot of challenges. So ADUs can provide some variety there. There’s a ton more information to share, but those were just a few pieces I thought could help answer some of the questions folks had throughout the night.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thanks.
Oh, excuse me, we do have a question for you from Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, Ms. Heiduk. Thank you for your work. I found it very informative, another avenue to receive public input, and I appreciate that. Where do you personally stand on where the proposal is currently?
Sure.
In support or opposition, or how would you couch your position?
Yeah, I am in support of this. So in the process, I was able to participate in the work group, and also, like I mentioned, had a focus group with Rogers Park community members to learn more about what the challenges are and help inform the munis process on that. There’s never going to be this kind of silver bullet, but when I think about the crisis we’re in as a community and how people want to be able to move forward, be able to age in place, add housing as best they can, these proposed changes get at the cost. The biggest barrier to move this forward, move any housing forward, is at that cost. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Marcela Peña. I’m speaking as an individual, and I’m grateful to have walked in on this meeting. So I just walked in on this meeting thinking this might be a Transportation Commission meeting and grateful that it was not. I, Title 11 brought me back, and Title 11 pretty much killed my parents. So it’s interesting, this is Title 21. As a result of both of my parents passing away on the same day, largely as— As a result of both of my parents passing away on the same day, largely as a result of Title 11 massively devaluing eight of their taxi permits, which had at one point a valuation of over a million dollars and on their day of death was reduced to $44,000 thanks to three government agencies in the city working together to make that happen, including the Assembly and Transportation Commission. As a result of my parents passing away, I am getting to inherit two properties half a block away from each other in South Anchorage. Both are opposite Anchorage, both are opposite of Ocean View Park. Very desirable properties. One is a single lot, one is a double lot. The double lot had a rental property. My father had his eye on that property for almost 20 years, if not over 20 years. He was able to have it as an owner for 12 years of his life. I've been able to enjoy it now since November 8th of 2020, when my parents passed away. I was able to remove 10 family members from that house Tuesday of last year, of last week on the same day, allowing me to avoid an eviction. Their past history was used against them and encouraged them to move out the same day. I now have a property that I get to rent out again and I have a lot of interest in ADUs. I just came from being in Portland for 31 years. I was brought there to go to Lewis and Clark College and also went to Architecture School at Portland State University. I have a lot of interest in becoming a certified ADU specialist and would like to use that to my benefit while residing here. And Anchorage is my primary residence. The double lot that the residents at the rental property is on is a four-bedroom, one-story house and it is interesting because it is right in the smack center of the property. The property is within a covenant that does not allow it to be split, but additional housing can be put on it. Currently, Portland, I was with a college friend for 22 days in his house while he was in Europe this May, and before he left, we had a conversation about how he wants an ADU and how Portland is allowing two ADUs on all properties in Portland. That is something you might want to consider. I also am very curious to design ADUs which are largely underground. I'm actually inspired by a property that has been here since my childhood and I experienced my childhood in Anchorage for 15 years, from 3 to 18. I have a lot of interest in ADUs and you will be hearing from me again. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one else in person, I do believe we have one person wishing to testify over the phone.
Hello, you can try my home phone, 345-8738, or leave me a name and phone number and I'll get back to you within the day. Bye.
I disconnected. Should we leave a message?
Can we try one more time? Thank you.
Hello, you can try my home phone, 345-8738, or leave me a name and phone number and I'll get back to you within the day. Bye. Hello, you can try my home phone, 345-8738, or leave me a name and phone number and I'll get back to you within the day.
All right, let's try. 345-8738?
(phone rings) Hello?
Hello, is this Nancy Pease?
It is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for public testimony in case 2022-0090. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
I am representing Rabbit Creek Community Council.
Great. Could you please state your full name for the record and you may begin.
My name is Nancy Pease. I am representing Rabbit Creek Community Council. Rabbit Creek Community Council acknowledges the benefits to individuals and to the city of a well-drafted policy for accessory dwelling units. However, our council found numerous shortcomings in the proposed amendment and we hope you will make some changes. We did send written comments August 31st and we hope that you have had a chance to read our entire comments, in part because we found that staff's response was often cursory and dismissive and used circular reasoning rather than addressing our substantive concerns. And I'll point out a couple of those instances of dismissiveness. One of our concerns is homeownership and neighborhood stability. Removing the requirement for owner occupancy works against continued homeownership and residential stability. Staff's response to that was that it's not clear how ADUs as a building type promote ownership or neighborhood stability. And they stated in their response, if there's evidence that the existence of ADUs hampers residential stability, they'd be glad to include it in the packet. Well, what we're talking about here is homeownership and we did provide that information, that data, on page two of our comments, where we noted that the average tendency of a homeowner is 13 years compared to the average tendency of a renter in a single-family home of about three years. And in addition, renters, 26% of renters move within the first year. So there is absolutely data that homeownership contributes to neighborhood stability. Another point of that, I guess, yeah, that's fine there. Targeted infill is another one of our concerns. The ADU regulation allows a random doubling of housing intensity by encouraging speculative random infill, which we think will create pockets of density without additional services or infrastructure. And this is against the policy, this goes against the policy of, for example, Policy 12 and the 2020 Anchorage Bowl Land Use Plan, which clearly states that the provision of municipal services are integral to higher-density living, specifically transit, active transportation, public open spaces, and emergency services. And the answer staff gave us to this was, well, ADUs are not included in the density calculations for a site. And that's not an answer, that just restates the problem that we're identifying. ADUs, which will be accelerated if there is lifting of the homeownership requirement, they do, they do increase density and they increase it potentially in pockets where services will not be extended. So that is another of our concerns. And then another point is that staff, we understand that the general impediment to any residential construction is cost and financing. And staff analysis provides no evidence that increasing the height or the setbacks, or decreasing setbacks, or the bulk of the ADU are necessary to reduce costs or improve financing. And in fact, they say as much in their response to us. We're not making any claims that this will increase affordability or that this will increase the ability of homeowners to build ADUs. So with those concerns, I wanted to turn to the request that Rabbit Creek Community Council is making. We strongly urge that you retain the current requirement that at least one landowner will occupy the principal dwelling or the accessory unit. We ask that you adopt into 2105070D a process for annual verification that properties with ADU have owner occupancy and prescribe sufficient penalties to achieve compliance. We ask that you retain the current proportionality and size of the ADU in the Class B district, a maximum of 35% rather than 40% of the square footage of the primary dwelling. We have a special concern in the Class B district where there are onsite septic and well systems and those are, will result in bedroom limits. And so we request that you retain the two-bedroom limit for the ADU in the Class B district. And we also would like provision to deter short-term rentals. Short-term rentals drive human capital out of the neighborhood. Renters can be great assets to a neighborhood. Generally, if they stay for a longer time, they're a greater asset, but short-term rentals by vacationers, they enjoy the neighborhood, but they don't, they don't give back. And we're trying to build communities here, not just housing, so please keep that in mind. And we would like to have a requirement-
Excuse me, your five minutes for testimony has ended. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for her. Is she still on?
Commissioner Strike, please proceed with your question.
Sorry, we're on the phone. Call back in another five minutes if possible. If not, leave a message.
My error, I disconnected. Let me, if I could, I'll call back.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Pease, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission. I disconnected you by mistake. There's a question for you, if you would.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, thank you for that testimony and thank you for the packet that you submitted. A little bit concerning regarding the responses that you had had from the city regarding some of your responses earlier, and while we won't get into that, the substantive changes that you are looking at, could you reiterate those again? I think the first one was to keep the homeownership, second was to adopt the annual review process. And could you continue on?
Yes, thank you for that opportunity to continue and finish. We would like to have consideration of a requirement or at least a strong incentive for owners of a new ADU to sign a covenant enforceable by penalties not to engage in short-term rentals of less than 30 days for a period of 10 years. We understand that Portland, Oregon, has started to do this. And there can be a process included for verification and penalties and the covenant could run with the property. So if the owner sells within 10 years, the purchaser will still be obliged to provide, you know, longer-term resident housing rather than short-term rentals, short-term vacation-type rentals. And last, we're urging as a sort of overall, that neighborhood densities be recalculated to determine the current and projected ADU housing stocks for municipal planning purposes. We see no reason why ADU housing units should not be part of the housing stocks because certainly the density impacts where we need roads, schools, parks, emergency services, et cetera. So we hope that the municipality will, will make that change. I realize it's not part of this ordinance, but we hope the Planning and Zoning Commission will support that. Thank you.
And thank you. I think you raise an interesting point that one of the unintended consequences of this is that the city has inadvertently doubled the housing stock with a widespread change such as proposed. One question regarding the Rabbit Creek area, I understand that, and I would presume that there's a lot of the neighborhoods that are protected by CCNRs?
I, I think so. I'm, I'm, yes, I think so.
And is it your understanding that, and I'm posing this as a question, that these type of changes and rules as promoted here would circumvent this current CCNRs or the CCNRs still prevail?
I, I, you know, I honestly can't, can't speak to that. I'm only really aware of my CCRs and that may be a legal question. You know, I know, for example, my CCR has a requirement for no dwelling being built less than 900 square feet. That was a provision, I think, to avoid sort of cabins back in the old days, they wanted more substantive houses. That, you know, I have no idea if that would be an impediment or whether the zoning code would override that. That's, I think, for the lawyers.
Thank you.
Yes.
Seeing no further questions, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Does staff have any rebuttal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will try to go through these quickly. Yes, we did receive a pretty lengthy comment from Rabbit Creek right at the, after the comment period had been closed. I had spoken with them earlier in the year. Some of the things I just want to clarify, first of all, is that in areas with slope or well and septic, those are managed by a separate code. So if you have a septic, I believe a septic system is generally limited to a number of bedrooms. So even if you have space on the property, if your septic system can't handle it, I don't think you can add any more bedrooms there at all. And my understanding is that in some of those larger lot zones where there are higher slopes, lot size maximum is really the coverage, the thing that limits the use of those lots. And in Eagle River, I think they have their own sort of slope zones. So a lot of those issues, just they're not dealt with in this code because they're already dealt with in other existing codes and we're really trying not to duplicate some of those things. In terms of some of the other comments, I don't know that Portland has that requirement. I believe they have it if you get a tax exemption for your ADU or if you get an SDC, a system development, charge waiver, but I do not believe that Portland has an owner occupancy requirement. So just a lot of those things, you know, in the comments, it's just unclear if somebody says, well, this causes instability or instability. The question is, well, how? I mean, what, what is it about renting as a form of tenure that creates instability? Is there some sort of deleterious nature to that? And that's the piece we said, if there's evidence that you can show that the existence of a renter somehow negatively affects property values or makes the neighborhood less stable, which is also sort of a, an unclear term, that's the thing. Because a lot of these are fairly values-loaded terms and so it's just better to have those defined. And in terms of whether, what this can or can't do, we did try to take a very sort of central role on this and say, yeah, the existing ADU language is really sort of idealistic and hopeful it has all these purpose statements. Unfortunately, that's just not very good useful regulatory language. You can't really do much with that, right? If, if the ADU says, oh, this is supposed to make homeownership better, but then the code doesn't, then you have this kind of weird contradiction between the code and the purpose statement. So we really just said, look, the purpose of an ADU is to let people build an ADU. We don't know if it will increase homeownership. We don't know if it'll do X, Y, or Z. We think it'll create more units. And the affordability piece is especially, I think, important because the term affordability at this point means anything to a number of people, right? Does it mean income restricted? Is it HUD at 80% AMI? It's just not clear. And so to say in the code, this shall be affordable, affordable to whom and at what income? And are we putting on an income restriction? And so that's why we kind of tried to get away from that, plus the other pieces of other people have mentioned. It's not that easy to build an ADU. So if there's an expectation that we want people to build them and then rent them out for a fraction of what they cost or give them away for free, I think we're placing an unreasonable expectation on whoever is creating those. But fortunately, the code doesn't really have to speak to that. It just says, here are the issues and here are the things that don't seem to be solving a discrete problem. So that's why we remove them. And another thing in terms of the solar access, somebody said the right to solar access. Well, I don't know if a right to solar access is codified in code, but zoning code does give everybody a right to a certain amount of height. So what this zoning code, this proposal does is it says, you have the right to this amount of height in your zone and now you can just do it as an ADU or as a single-family home. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, if somebody could build a box that's 30 feet high, it'll cast the same shadow as a, as a smaller box and an ADU that's also 30 feet high. So it's really just about kind of making things a bit more fair and more honest, especially so people can look at this and say, okay, we're applying the same rules to all these things. We're applying them fairly and impartially. We're applying them fairly and impartially." Thank you.
Commissioner Strick, did you have a question for staff, or is that a leftover?
Yeah, as follow-up.
Thank you.
They do call it pride of ownership, not pride of rentership. So we won't go into the details of whether or not homeownership promotes better property and promotes better property values and so forth. But you mentioned that they have the right to build up to the height anyway. So why are we changing it? Why are we codifying it? If it's not a problem, if they already have that right, why are we making the change here? What change are we making that gives them the right that you said they already have the right?
If I may, through the chair. Currently, an ADU is limited to a lower height than the existing principal structure. And this just says, "An ADU can go to the existing height in the zone." The understanding that if a zone has a set height limit, and that's the appropriate height for that zone, then it maybe doesn't really matter if it's an ADU or something else.
In your earlier test, in your earlier presentation, you mentioned you weren't concerned about number of rooms. So we don't address the rooms. So by code, they're able to do whatever, on the hillside, but has a septic system, but they have to meet another code regarding the septic system being able to handle so many bedrooms. Why wouldn't the, instead of addressing the number of rooms and so forth, not to exceed the amount of capacity of the septic? I mean, we're making now, you know, we want to make it easier for the homeowner to go and make improvements or make these changes, yet we're going to say, "Well, we're not going to address that in this code, because they're going to find that in another code."
If I may, through the chair. Yeah, the intent is just to not have duplicative code, especially because when you have that and one code section changes, and maybe you don't catch the other one, that's when the problems really kind of come up. And the thinking behind that was, well, if this is already regulated to solve this problem, then it's in that section about septic, right? And I can see it would be sort of kind of frustrating to come across that, but then the question is, well, do you want it in two separate places, where in one place it's referring to solving a specific problem, where in the other place, if somebody says, "Well, why do you have this regulation in the ADU code?" And you say, "Oh, it's for septic." Well, a lot of the city isn't on septic. And with bedrooms or rooms overall, I mean, you could say, it's also not clear what problem is that trying to solve? Is it trying to limit people? Because you could have four people in one room, or one people in one room. And it's also very difficult to, it's basically impossible to enforce that.
But we don't address that with the septic system. We call it bedrooms and so many, it's a so-many-room house for the septic system. So on a two-and-a-half-acre lot up on the hillside, we can put two septic systems in and emulate the current house and basically create two, without subdividing the lot now, we can put two units, basically, two homes.
If I may, through the chair, if it's an ADU, it has to be smaller and meet those size requirements. As for the septic, well, well's another issue. That's all dealt with by the state, is their well capacity. And you can look on the muni and see, you can look at the wells. Septic, those are rules that are tied to a very specific situation, and we didn't want to create duplicative rules.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, I guess I'll just follow up on that. Can you just verify that you cannot receive a building permit until the building department has verified that the septic system on-site can accommodate all the bedrooms proposed? And I guess that's a rhetorical question. I know the answer is, "Yeah." You will not receive an ADU permit without having a septic system that can handle the number of proposed bedrooms. And I guess I'll just give a quick example. I'm permitting a two-bedroom house right now, where they're going to turn their existing cabin, this is on the hillside, like an old cabin with one bedroom, but they updated their three-bed, to a three-bedroom septic a while back, because they knew what they were doing. And so we're going to build what will eventually be the primary structure, and the existing cabin is what they want to use as an ADU. So that's just an example. But I had another question. On an internal ADU conversion, I heard one of the, some of the testimony they talked about, that's actually what most people have interest in. How does that, how does the parking play in in that instance? Like, if you were taking a 2,000-square-foot house and say, "Oh, we're going to take 600 of this and turn it into an ADU and just leave 1,400 for me to live in," would, then would you be required to, under current code, would you be required to add a parking space because you're adding an ADU?
If I may, through the chair. My first response is, I believe that for residential, at least in single-family, the parking isn't set by square footage, it's just set by the units. So the intent here is if you added one, it doesn't. It's just, there's no additional requirement. And I don't know if reducing the space of that single-family would impact the parking at all. I believe the requirement would still be the same, as long as it's there. Is that the question?
I guess what I was wondering is if you had a house, say, it has a two-car garage and maybe two parking spaces in the driveway, and then you came along and turned the interior, a portion of that house into an ADU, which in, like, would make the house smaller, and the ADU would take up some of that space, would you be required to add an additional parking space under the current code? And under the proposed code, I'm pretty sure that would go away. But I was just, I guess that was an example. I was just thinking of a point where this parking thing might actually be a burden on an internal ADU conversion. But I wasn't sure if the code required you to add a parking place currently.
I think the current code says if you add an ADU, you have to demonstrate you have parking for it, unless you're willing to basically put a covenant on. And we have some of those too, and some people do do them, which never really get enforced. But my understanding is that currently, any ADU, if you add it, you have to demonstrate, you have to demonstrate you have a space for a vehicle before you can add it. So in that case, I think, say you're using the garage, you wouldn't be able to convert it if it took up those spaces, and you couldn't provide the extra one.
I guess what I'm hearing, and I'll just say this just for the benefit of the group, is I would imagine that the scenario I laid out with two parking spaces in a garage and two in the driveway, you probably have an extra parking space. So if you were adding an ADU, you likely wouldn't have to add a spot, so it'd probably be okay.
Commissioner Polis?
I just wanted to add to that conversation. I think you would have to recalc your bedrooms. You know, if you're taking out two bedrooms to make the ADU, you could recalc the parking required for that unit, and it would probably, just like you said, be a wash in that situation. I think I agree with that.
Seeing no further questions, the public hearing is now closed. What is the will of the body? Moved by Commissioner Ron and seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Ron, would you please state your motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move in case 2022-0090 to recommend the Anchorage Assembly approval of an ordinance amending Title 21 accessory dwelling unit regulations.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, thank you. Fellow commissioners, appreciate the questions. To a lesser extent, appreciate the testimony before we've gotten to this point by the commission, but obviously, it's an issue that we have some passions about, as does the public. So here we are. I'll start by saying I intend to support the motion. A great deal of work has been done, as we heard from the public since, you know, the 1970s, if not earlier, on this issue. The reason why it's still being worked is because, as we also heard from a member of the public, there is no silver bullet. That said, I do see this as a step in a better direction, that, you know, advances a path that the community has been on. Not saying that it is the perfect fix, but I think that it really does speak to the root of what the word accessory means, right? Access, increased access to dwelling units in this case. I think the department has made some great attempts at simplifying some of the issues that existed in prior wording of the code. We heard from members of the public on both sides of the issue. By my informal tally, it was in support, two to one, versus against. That's not to say that those against didn't bring arguments that weigh on my mind. They do. But at the end of the day, I like enough of what I see here to put it in play and see where it goes. So with that, I'll cede my time and perhaps jump back in later.
Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? Commissioner Winchester?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Ron was very succinct and spoke to a lot of the same feelings I shared. There's a lot of well-reasoned, thought-out testimony here tonight, probably more so than we've had in quite a while, and all of it weighs on me. Whether this degrades neighborhoods, it erodes the neighborhood field of owners, or whether it allows an elderly person to stay in their house, to pay their property taxes through the income generated from a unit, remains to be seen. So I liked your little breakdown of the word accessory to make dwelling units more available. So I think this is a modest step in the direction on the continuum of our housing needs, and we'll see where it lands. But I tend to support it, and I think it's a move in the right direction.
Thank you. Commissioner Polis?
I support 99% of everything in this proposal. The one thing I have serious heartburn about is just negating the required parking space for an-
We'll reconvene the meeting now.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. Right now, I'm about 80% there. My concern and my address here is that the proverbial, if it's not broken, what are we trying to fix? The changes that are being promoted here aren't going to lower the cost of building these ADUs. It's going to create a widespread change across the whole municipality of basically codifying the, what is allowed and not allowed. And certain of these items, I have no capitulation, height, no problem. In fact, you build it higher, it's going to cost more, not less. Homeownership, the annual reviews that brought up by Nancy Peace with the Rabbit Creek, the promoting the hospitality units and not long-term dwelling units. These, I believe, are unintended consequences that these particular, some of these particular changes, I believe, have an impact on. The current code as written still works. It was brought forth in 2018. And we all know what happened at the end of 2019. COVID hit. A lot of this, we haven't had a chance to have this run through the process and let these ADUs that were out there pending come forth. A lot of stuff wasn't built for reasons, cost being one. Today, it's interest rates. This isn't going to lower the interest rate. This isn't going to lower the cost. Now, we talk about parking. If it's parking in a in-house ADU versus an external ADU that's being built, they each have different parking requirements. One, you didn't increase the square footage of that 2,000-square-foot home that, as Commissioner Spinelli indicated, all you did was convert an existing housing to that level. The other one, you increased the footprint. Yes, there's an increase then for that parking, depending on what part of the city you're in. So again, unintended consequences, but as a whole, in my opinion, this, these changes here aren't addressing the fundamental needs of the ADU to create long-term housing solutions for the city. And I believe it was either the Rabbit Creek or the Rogers Park Community Council that made the one statement, I think, that resonated. This current changes are promoting hospitality units, not long-term dwelling units. That's just with little changes here regarding homeownership. We're not taking away, and for that reason, that's why I'm not supporting this motion, is because I believe that the current regulations actually create more strength within the community, within the neighborhoods, than these changes will make. Unless we could go part and parcel some of these changes that are being promoted, which I don't, I agree with some of them, but I can't get past all of them. So for that reason, I'll vote no.
Thank you. Is there anyone further wishing to speak?
I would like to speak, and I can't seem to figure out how to do it in the computer.
Go ahead, Commissioner Spinelli.
I intend to support the motion. I think a lot of work has gone into it, and a lot of people spend a lot of time, and I was part of some of these conversations, and there's been a lot of thought that went into it. As far as some of the, like, I'm not very, I just don't see the parking changes becoming a huge problem, because the amount of investment it is to, say, build a new standalone ADU, it's a pretty major investment, and to add the needed parking, if you anticipate you will have a need for parking, I don't see that as a cost that you would forego if you thought you needed it. In the grand scheme of things, it's a pretty small percentage compared to the overall budget required to build one of these ADUs. And I think there's been examples given where people who knew for a fact that they weren't going to need parking for an ADU, but wanted to build the most affordable ADU possible, and that then that was a financial burden in that instance. The other thing that some of these rule changes allow for is they allow the creation of ADUs out of existing buildings, because what we currently have is a special set of rules, different heights, different setbacks for ADUs. And I've heard stories just over the past couple of years about people trying to create, and taking, say, for example, there's a detached garage with room above it that's in the front yard of a house. It's, and the ADU currently, if it's not attached to the principal structure, needs to be 40 foot back. And so somebody was trying to turn what they already had, what's already there, into an ADU, and they couldn't do it. So I think bringing the ADU codes in line with the just standard zoning codes is a good idea, and for that reason, I intend to support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? The motion passes five to one. And that is all of our agenda. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. And thank you to everyone who came to testify tonight. And thank you to everyone who came to testify tonight. Moved by Commissioner Polis, seconded by Commissioner Winchester, we are adjourned.